Hello, how are you?
Hi Kathy.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we start? Are you ready to go?
Ready, ready.
I can't. Casey, I could barely hear you.
Uh.
Hey, hey, anyway, let me start off by apologizing because I'm the one who decided that we should go back to Zoom with the amount of COVID cases that Blount County was getting in the last.
Can you hear me better now? Okay.
Go ahead Casey.
I'm gonna sit on this.
Yes, yes. Anyway, I thought we needed to go back to the Zoom meeting rather than having everybody in the same room. I'm just a little paranoid now about the number of cases that have been generated in Miraval and Blount County. And talking to a couple of friends of mine who are physicians, they said the Knoxville is having a new resurgence in cases and they're adding additional wings for COVID cases in Knoxville. So I thought it would be better to stay with Zoom this week. But next month, I hope we can go back, go to live again. We find us to be everybody live. Okay, let's start off. Did everybody get a chance to read the minutes from last, last month? Are there any questions on the minutes at all? Do I have a, no, I don't hear any. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you, approved? Yeah, I don't have any really, anything to say as far as being the chair this, this month. Been a month of just kind of talking to people, finding out what's going on and nothing to really pass on to the board. So move on to, first off, are there any visitors? Casey, has anybody, or Kathy, has anybody checked in from the outside?
You're not muted.
No, just staff. The staff members are here.
And where's that song?
Just two?
Just library staff members.
Okay, okay, great. All right, now let's move on to Casey's report. Casey, you ready to go?
I am ready. I'm not sure what I'm.
You got, it was a long report.
I had a lot of pictures though, I had visual. Did anybody have any questions for me about what we're doing? Can you not hear me?
It's tough.
Why? Scroll up to the top.
I, I can hear Casey very clearly.
Can you?
Yeah, I'm not having any problems.
Okay.
You too, loud and clear.
Okay. So it's not me. All right, if I talk really loud.
That's probably my system.
Can you hear me?
That's good.
Okay.
Yes.
First of all, did anyone have any questions about my report?
I had, I had several, but let's go to somebody else's first. Anybody have any questions? I had a question on the, on page one of the director's report.
Okay.
It's a, question number one. Strongly agree was, nobody agreed? I think you meant strongly disagree.
Yeah, it is, it's a typo. Probably disagree.
I didn't hear you.
You're right, it should be disagree. It's a typo.
Okay, okay. I had some, could you explain a little bit on the, on page three, in the middle of the page, below the pictures about the bidding and the, and when on the, the government, Blount County Government Auction?
Okay.
On the basket and tell us a little bit about the basket?
Yes, I don't know, especially if we're on the board when Judge Dugan was chair, if you remember that you donated a fund for library promotions where we could do baskets, materials, United Way, part of charity. And there's still money in that fund that we have used it the past couple of years for the United Way Auction, which is an auction that the county holds to raise money for the county contribution to United Way. And this year it was a, Bruce always donates a handmade basket and then we purchase materials from the brands. I am in charge of wrapping and making it pretty and that is covered by me, little additions that are in it. But here were scary stories. And so you can see a picture of what was included in the basket. Sarah made a Ouija board card that went on the outside that listed everything that was in it. And Ms. Katie Kerr is the one at the county who actually bought the basket. So I know that the county made close to $3,000 this year, which is, which is pretty good considering it was an online auction. So they always look forward to our basket. This one was fun.
Okay, great, thank you. On page four, is everybody, if everyone goes to page four, are you going to talk about that later or talk about that now?
Yeah, just a little bit.
The SkyFi Initiative.
Yes, those are the table prototypes. What do you think? You like them? We, when we went outside around the building, we started looking at color typing and ended up that that blends really well with the windows because our windows, you know, in the sun look turquoise. So we're real happy with the color options. If you can see the logos on the, on the top and the Wi-Fi, the SkyFi logo will be on the stem. So those two tables are ordered.
What do you think?
Five weeks to get them, something like that.
That's my memory, how much is each table?
Uh, 12,000.
12,500. So if anyone knows of anyone who would like to buy a table or, or create a table, we're always looking for more money.
Rotary is close to having the fun today. Our goal is to do four this year. Tell them about your conversation with Mark Johnson about this year.
I did have a. I did have a. I'm sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback.
We're, we're taking care of it, we're meeting people. Okay, go ahead.
Anyway, I did meet with Mark Johnson and presented him the idea of the pavilion and the, and the SkyFi and he was very, very, very positive about the SkyFi system, told him that not only was Blount County interested in putting one in Alcoa, but he was thrilled to have one in Alcoa and wanted to put it somewhere around the Duck Pond Elementary School area. And so that they had just been talking about how they can increase their Wi-Fi systems in Alcoa, so he was very, very supportive of it and very happy to hear that something like that was gonna happen. So we're, we'll be working on that. Yes.
Logan Hill, this is Casey. Casey, I see the iconic emblem is on, on this. Are they contributing towards the purchase of these?
Yes, they gave us the seed money for the project, 25,000.
Okay.
There, these two tables were primarily funded by them with a little bit of support from friends' money and, but their, so their logo shows up on these three times. But moving forward, they will always have one of the slots because they were the seed money for the project.
No, I think it's a good idea. I'm not, you know, that's a bad idea. What, what's the other emblem?
The Friends is on here and the Library and Rotary, which are the partners.
Okay.
Project.
Good, thank you.
But there's two more openings, so if somebody else would like to donate or if you know of anyone that you can contact for 12-5 or, or any portion of it, we would love to have it. We're gonna be beating the bushes for the next few months and seeing what we can come up with. We'd like to put at least four more of these out.
Okay, so six is our target.
Four was our target.
For right now.
Right now it's four and we are two and three fourths. So I think once the tables are here and installed, it's gonna be easier to get people to go, oh yeah, I wanna, I wanna have my name on this out in my community, so.
Refresh my memory if, if we already talked about this, like can is many people, do you have to sit right under the table? Can you be 100 feet away? Is it a limit to four people because there's four seats or how does, how does it work?
The Wi-Fi signal itself should be usable within a perimeter of the table, not necessarily just at the table. And the tables hold eight people, those are pretty big seats. They help two people a seat. Of course, in COVID, I don't know that I want more than one other person at the table with me. But the, the, the beauty of the table is that you can charge your device.
Right.
You can either plug it or there are slots. If your, if your device has Bluetooth, just lay it down in the slot and it'll charge. Built into the table as well as the capacity that control or to put some protections in place for how people will use the internet through the table. And it lights up, so at night underneath it lights up so you can work at night.
The county is really interested in this to get areas that have no Wi-Fi capabilities to have something like this in, in the area. They talked about putting one in the mall, one in Alcoa and one somewhere south, wherever that might be.
Where they run a dark fiber line.
Of course, they haven't come up with any money for us. Any, and the, the colors going forward, Casey, don't have to be the same, do they?
No. What, what we probably like to do though is keep the base color the same, the black and the charcoal and then change, just paint the color on the canvas.
Okay. Good, okay. Thank, any other questions on the SkyFi? Anything else on Casey's report? Casey, can we come back under old business and talk about the program that you had with, with the staff?
Yeah.
You mind?
I mean, it's not under, it's not listed, I'll talk about it now.
You want to talk about that? Okay, that's fine.
Part of the report. So did everyone see the evaluation from the staff on the staff development?
Yes.
Evidently, the employees really enjoyed this. And my, my question was how often do you plan on doing these?
Um, twice a year is what we usually do. We usually have a day twice a year. I think the only thing that I heard over and over again was they were very uncomfortable at that point about being even in small groups, you know, they didn't want to be around one another. I don't know if they feel the same way now because at that point we had not had quite the use of the library that we have now. I don't know, I, I have days where I'm ultra paranoid about everything and then I have days where I'm just tired. I think staff feels the same way.
That's a common feeling, so we understand.
Yeah, I can understand, I definitely can understand that.
Yeah.
I would like to see if at all, if at all possible going forward, if we ever get out of this COVID crisis, that this becomes almost a twice a year event, if not more. In, in reading the notes from the, from the employees, I think they were really pleased with it.
I wanted.
Did you all send a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I wanted to say that the regional library has been really great about having training for our staff available all the time. The only issue we're running into is we can't schedule them free to take it because our schedule is so tight. In order to keep staff from being piled up in one spot, working together for extended periods of time, you know, we had to separate them and it's very, very difficult to free them up. So we're not sure how we're gonna manage that. We hope it gets better. We just got our three new people in, that should help. Chelsea had surgery yesterday. The, this is Chelsea Matheny who's in the cafe. She had herniated dick in her back and she's been an ongoing problem for her for a year. But her, one of her legs went numb. So she waited around a week and a half for a neurologist to get back with her who told her he couldn't see her till December. So she went to the emergency room and just said, look, I'm dying, my leg's numb. They did an assessment and put her right into surgery. But she said today, it was the first day in forever that she could walk with no pain with her leg and back. So she's out of home from the hospital today and will be, you know, in recovery for five or six weeks though. But we're happy. It's been a long road for her.
How long is, how long is the recovery period?
Five or six weeks. She has to go through some physical therapy, things like that. And I don't want her to come back to work till she has an assessment through HR that says she is cleared because she does lifting and things like that in the cafe, even though I've told her not to do it, she does it. So I, I wanna know from a risk management perspective.
What is the, what is the county rules on, on paying her?
Um, she is filing for FMAA and she, you know, the, the policy is you use your sick leave, then you use your personal leave and then you have leave without pay. But her, I always work with employees that have serious illness. If they work from home, then we work out a program where they can work so many hours from home that with, with their health. And then, you know, we balance it out that way. So there is a lot that Chelsea has still been doing for us, orders and keeping up with menu planning for catering and things like that. So we're able to offset some of it with work, work time.
Good. All right, Lisa provided the food for, for this meeting. You, I'm sure you sent her some kind of a thank you note or something.
No.
The job she did.
You paid her.
Yeah, but in addition, in addition to that, thank you.
We didn't.
Okay.
Here's what comes a week though and I say thank you, no, I, you know, really, we didn't, it was an oversight on my part, I should have. I will take steps to correct that.
Okay, before we, before I move on to the rest, are there any questions on the, on the financial report that's part of Casey's report? I noticed that in some of the areas it was very, very positive against the budget and then of course some areas were really, really tough.
We have a curve on expenses, so some things are paid upfront at the beginning of the year, some things are paid toward the end. So without looking at the line item, it would be hard to, would be hard to tell you off the top of my head if we've spit the line already for the year, you won't be any more coming up except for the periodicity already, like the periodicals line, that's, that's, that has been taken.
Anyone have any questions on, any question, financial report? Okay. Well, let's move on then. Angela, do you have a report from the foundation?
Yes, I do. The foundation met on October 2nd and at that meeting, we took care of our routine business of accepting minutes, financial statements and report approval. We also further discussed the funding request from the Board of Trustees to upgrade the technology in the Dorothy Heron Conference Rooms and Casey was able to give us a little more information on that and also able to answer some of our questions about how that would be used. Ah, Casey, you're on my screen and now my document, now it's both places, wow, that's magic. So we did discuss the funding request and we approved the funding request to do the Zoom upgrades on the Heron Room, but since that was not presented with a full proposal of itemized costs, we just asked that when the vendor does send us the invoice for that, that those costs be itemized on the invoice so we can see the details of the project at that time. Beyond that, Andy and Casey both joined us for the meeting and Andy gave us many of the same updates he gave you about his meetings on building maintenance with county funding and he also gave us updates on the SkyFi and Library Pavilion Project discussions. I think that was with the eye toward if the foundation needed to step in and join fundraising or funding requests for those, we would have some idea of what those projects would involve in terms of costs and ongoing commitments for funding. And then we finished off the meeting by really digging into some planning for a year-end appeal to go out from the Foundation Board. We'd like to start sharing the wonderful project we funded and we want to use that as a way to start cultivating relationships and rebuilding a donor base. We know that the foundation's fundraising activities have been dormant, even though our actual funding of projects has not. The conscious appeal to grow our investments has been and this is our first step towards reviving the process of active fundraising.
That's great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Angela, I have a question.
Sure.
The foundation, I know this past year we've had people coming off the board. Are you growing the board more thus far this, this particular year?
We are in the process of figuring out what our board composition will be in the coming year. At this point in time, the only person I am aware of who is coming off of the board is John Dockery. He has no choice, by the board's bylaws, he's finishing his sixth year and he cannot stay longer without taking a break. So if any of you have suggestions for CPAs, accountants and people who can file all the nonprofit paperwork regarding accounting and chartering, we would love to hear those names from you because we are looking for someone to step into that role. But other than that, I believe that everyone else on the board plans to continue.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other, other board positions open? I mean, is there, is there a limited amount of people that can be on the board?
There is not a limit to the number of people who could be on the board, but it, the number of people who serve is tailored to match the projects that are going on. So right now we have six total people on the board and that seems to be a good size and a good mix of expertise so that people are there for the work we're doing right now in terms of rebuilding a web presence and figuring out some publicity messaging and fundraising messaging, taking care of sort of the correspondence and records and that sort of thing. So at this point in time, we're not looking for anyone other than someone with the financial treasurer source of expertise, but if you know of people who are interested in serving, please do pass their names on as well. We are always eager to take help from people who would like to join us.
Okay. I, I was just thinking if Bill Haslam decided that he wanted to be on, on the board, would, would there be a position for him?
Probably.
Okay. Good enough, thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I didn't see, is Bruce on here? He's, he's not. Is there, is there someone from the friends of the library?
I'm here.
He's there.
I'm there.
Oh, great, hey, how are you feeling?
Well, much better, thank you. I wouldn't, though, the recovery from this little surgery has been interesting and I, I appreciate the fact that Dick Burgess sat in for about the last month, so, but I'm, I'm slowly getting back into the saddle. Yep.
That's great. Good to see you.
Thank you. You want some, some comments out of the friends real quickly?
I, I would please.
Okay. The book donations continue at a fever pitch. It, we were expecting as this pandemic went on and on that the book donations would eventually tail off and certainly they haven't. We're still getting books in every day at, and at the back door, so that just continues. Yeah, we're, oh, yeah, we're, as, as was in the newspaper article, we're still getting something like 4,000 books per week donated. As far as overall performance. Pardon?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Of the three major efforts we have going, eBay continues to be our strongest performer. It is, I think in the month of September, they, they garnered almost $8,000 in business. Uh, which is another high record for eBay. We, we're expanding their footprint in the basement just because of the fact that. The, the gold mine that we've been reaping recently is paperback books. And it's amazing that these books we used to sell for a quarter a piece. We're now boxing up and selling now for the equivalent of a dollar fifty or so a piece in sets like romance books, westerns. Certain authors, and we're making a thousand bucks a month just off of the paperback books. And that, that effort mainly by Diane Rocco, who's the lead person there, is really making an impact. The community markets will end in October. As scheduled, in fact, they were scheduled to complete in mid-October. And we extended them through the month of October for the Saturday markets. So we've got a couple more of those to go. And then the basement sales continue to be strong. Uh, we're now, we have been doing a Saturday only basement sale. And uh, in, at the end of October, we're going to switch to. A monthly basement sale. We're going to call it second Saturday. We plan to do an advertising blitz, but we're really gonna, it takes a lot of work to put this sale on and the same people support it every time. So we are going to cut it back to once a month with a couple hours in the first thing dedicated to members. And the, the people who have memberships from basically 10 to 12, and then. Uh, the second part of the day we'll have open to the general public. But this is going to be on the second Saturday of the month. Amazingly, through all these efforts, I just heard today that. Within the last roughly six or seven months, we would have had a couple quarterly sales and, and through our, our normal efforts. We are within $600. Of the same period we had last year of making the money that the Friends made last year. And so even though we have been going through and in the middle of a pandemic. The, the Friends efforts continue to pay off. We're, we're, we gotta see if we can keep it going. But it has, it has performed quite well for us. That's about what I have, Andy.
Thank you. It's amazing. I want you to compliment whoever set up the sale area next to the snack bar. They change out the books at the front, you know, what's up on top. And unfortunately, they keep putting up books I like. And so when I walk through there, I have to buy one.
Have you been to the book?
So change out who that person is, would you?
Have you been to the bookstore, which is over by the elevator?
I have.
Hopping around somewhere.
Good. Thank you.
I hope it, I hope everybody visits both of those areas. How, how is the, the Saturdays themselves? You start at, at 10? And then you go till how long?
Well, you're talking about the basement sale? The, it, for the basement sale, they, they are 10 to three. Currently, and we have, yeah, we have a couple more of those to go. And then we plan to switch to the second Saturday sales. Which will probably, we haven't discussed and approved it yet, they will probably be 10 to four.
Okay.
Hey.
Great. Thanks for all the work that you, you've done there. Questions?
Want to talk about Brennan's book?
Oh. Uh, yes, Brennan, uh, who I think is listening, her book is Selling Like Hot Cakes right now. We got a. A note through from Jim saying that it can, the sales continue to be strong. And she is having a kickoff, I think it's this Thursday evening, a Zoom kickoff. Al- also to promote her book. But congratulations to Brennan. Uh, this, the book, the Mariville 1920s is being very well received. And it's, 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 yeah, a thousand dollars or so we've gotten already from the sale of that book.
We're very proud of the work.
Wow.
It's amazing.
That's great. Okay, thanks very much. Any other questions of the Friends? Okay, Liz, tell us what's happening in the state.
Hello.
Must be, must be interesting driving around, or are you just staying at home?
A little bit of both. We have a little bit of both, depending on, of course. Much like our library's phased reopenings, um, the COVID is, um, is. Presenting itself in different ways in different communities across the region. So we continue to see. Some of our libraries go ahead and expand and, and continue offering services and maybe. Offer a little more, uh, and some are getting back into the normal swing of things. Others are pulling back with, with closures. Due to various reasons, um, of course, from COVID cases increasing as well. So. It's all, it's all taken at a day at a time, like we all are. And so for our report, of course, um, we have the upcoming training opportunities. We have ventured into the foray of, of. Training again, which is of course a large part of what we do and what we really enjoy doing. Supporting our public libraries and the staff with professional development. So October the 12th, we hosted an internal controls and best practices session with representatives from C TASS and M TASS, and that's the county. County is C TASS, M TASS is municipal technical advisory. Services and so they talked about internal controls and. HR and some records retention and those kinds of questions that some of our libraries that don't have ready access to an HR department have. So we were really pleased to have them come and present for us. November the 12th, we are supposed to have our next regional library board meeting. December the 7th, we also have a all virtual training coming up. Uh, and that will be Youth Services Roundtable, um, where we have several of our librarians from our region that are going to be presenting. Uh, about using play to develop multiple literacy. So that will be a really good session, and we're looking forward to that. Um, of course, we continue to update our COVID-19 Live Guide page on the State Library and Archives Live Guide pages. I passed out to you all, and it's listed on the report as well. The annual standard survey, which our librarians complete, our library directors complete that each year for us. We have compiled all of their results, and we always provide a comparative analysis report for those. So you can see. Progress or any changes made. So we can, we can talk about that a little too. If anybody has any questions, that was included in your packet. The standard survey. So just briefly about that. There are, you'll see sort of a, a general overview compilation page to begin with, and then you, we go into each one of the different standards. Governance, budget, facility, personnel, technology, planning, all those different, different aspects of standards that we look at. Um, and so they have the more detailed individual questions and responses. So we do the comparison for last year, last fiscal year, 2018, 19, and then the next column is 2019, 20. And then the next column is, of course, Blount County is a level five library, which is one of our top tier libraries across the state. Um, and so you have the average number of all the level five, the percentage of, average percentage that all level five libraries are meeting those particular standards. And then that final column, the Tennessee average, you'll find, um, that's all levels. That's across the state. So, um, just to kind of explain that a little bit. Um, of course, a lot of our libraries are receiving their CARES Act grant funding and, um, moving forward with some of those purchases. And getting contracts signed and, and moving through that process. So we're excited about that. The annual public library survey, all of our library directors completed that on time. Kudos to all of them. Yes, C K C raising her hand. That is a, that is a really huge ordeal. Uh, it's a large task and a lofty task, and, and we're grateful to all of them for putting all the hard work in to get that done. Uh, and meet the deadline and, um, that information is so important. It's very crucial. It helps us to look at. Library services and all the wonderful things that they, services they provide and, and. Things that they do for their communities, and that goes to the state level, uh, that goes up to the federal level, and it helps inform. Everyone about the importance of public libraries to their communities. So we're really grateful for you all for doing that. I know it was a lot. Thank you. Then of course. Yes?
When will the reports be through the state, like approved and everything?
Well, that takes a while. It gets, so we have the whole month of, uh, usually the month of October, if not a little bit longer to. Go through and do edit checks and all that on those. And then of course. Uh, Kristy Chandler, our state data coordinator, will have to send that on to I M L S. Um, and it takes a bit, it takes a fair piece to get all those things pushed through. So I would say, I mean, we don't usually, I, I would say spring probably.
Once, yeah, once our report has gone through all the checks, I'll include a copy for you to see. It's packed in.
Yes, yes. And let's see what else. Um, of course, as a reminder. About electronic board meetings, you all know that. Um, and of course, we included Governor Lee's most recent executive order number 60. About all the requirements for a meeting virtually. Uh, and then annual documents. Um, I submitted your maintenance of effort form. So as soon as we get that back and we get everything approved and signed off. Um, I will then present, of course, all copies of all the annual documents for all the board members. That's the library service agreement, the official service area population document. And the maintenance of effort document, just for your records. So you will have that as well. Aside from that, the read statistics for, at least for July, August, and September are included. And as a regional total, of course, we had 49,434 CIRCs for the region. It's down a little, um, but it, that's still a pretty, that's, that's still a pretty good hefty chunk of CIRC. So, um, we'll continue to watch that and hopefully add a few more titles coming soon here.
Liz, has there been any change at all to the executive order from August from the governor?
Not from the last executive order 60 that I'm aware of. No. The one that's attached.
Yeah, okay. Any questions of Liz from anyone? Thank you very much. Are there any libraries that are not open?
Not now. Uh, we have some that are not open to the public coming in to browse necessarily, but they are providing curbside service. And also computer use by appointment in the library, but in a particular area. But most of our libraries are open, um, like open to the public. They may have modified hours. Um, and maybe not providing every single service as far as like programming is concerned and things like that, but most of them are open.
In the, in the bigger cities, and I would put Mariville in that, or, or Blood County in that. Are, what are the, what are the standard hours now? Are, are there, is, is there a standard set of hours?
No, they're, they're kind of just, um, it's all over the board. We have some of our smaller libraries that have been open for. A, a really long time and who are back to their regular, um, pre-COVID hours, but many of them are not. We have several, uh, as we noted on the maintenance of effort agreement, of course, because we. We took the hours of operation into consideration, obviously. And several of our libraries are still operating on modified hours as opposed to the full hours that they had been open prior to the pandemic.
Okay.
Hard to give an average.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to apologize. My system keeps going in and out. And so if I don't answer, you don't hear me. That's because it's gone, but it keeps coming back. All right, let's, let's switch over to old business. The first thing on old business is the social media policy. And Casey, will you want to run through that?
Actually, I think I might. Y'all did it. Gotcha. Her department really. Well, I guess.
It seems like we approved the social media policy, didn't we? And just held off on the internal social media?
So the thing is, is, um, because we were addressing, uh, the policy, we wanted to create, we wanted to cover both bases. And when it was initially submitted to you, it was submitted as one document. Now it has been, um, split into two separate documents. And it has had the, um, changes that were recommended through.
Kelly.
Through Ms. Manning. And that is the, the last update. So are there any, the, the social media crisis plan?
Is that the first time I've seen this?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think, no.
Didn't y'all get the crisis plan before? This wasn't the first time, was it?
The crisis plan is the third document, which is the procedure that is taken internally when we have something that's having a negative. Public messaging effect and how we handle it.
Yeah, and we've already approved that, have we not?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So what, what is it that we need to approve tonight?
The two policies, the internal and external social media policy.
I thought we approved the external and just haven't done the internal. But we do both, that's fine.
Kathy, do you, I, I didn't think we had actually. Do you remember?
Which Kathy are you?
Praying my memory.
And you're asking me, um, uh, I don't, I don't remember and I don't have.
It, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, let's just do both then.
Go over to get.
Talk about it, but I do not remember a formal vote.
All right, let, let's take it section at a time. Let's take the. The external first. Any questions or anybody have any comments on the external policies?
No, and I thought it was particularly well done, Andy and, and Casey and, and all of you who were a part of developing that. That was a lot of work. It looked like a lot of work. Yeah.
They did a great job.
And, and, um, when you're ready to entertain a motion, I'm happy to offer one to approve it. I don't want to.
I had one question, and that was on section J, um, the commenting section. Organized political activity. Can you kind of talk me through that?
So the, the whole. The whole point of our social media or our social platforms and. Is to share. is to share, uh, sources of information for the community. So if someone is placing a politically, um, charged event, it would not, we might let them advertise and say that it's at the library, but we would not promote it for them. Does that make sense? It would not be, if someone goes onto our Facebook page and says that Democratic Party of Brook County is meeting at the library, we would take it off of our page. They can put it on their page, but it's not the space, not the appropriate space to come, because we want our platforms to talk about our mess, like what, what our initiatives are doing and what we're doing. Um, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And it's not uncommon for
It, it makes sense. Is it? Is it clear somewhere?
Is it, is it what?
Is it clear somewhere?
No.
Who's going to be the, the decider of that document? I mean, that particular information?
Exactly.
On today and I, we probably would call whoever the board chair is at the time and, and discuss it before any action was taken.
I think it's gonna be important that the board is on board with this to avoid any type of, uh, negative information getting out to the public, um, that may be, you know, uh, not advantageous to what, what our goals and objectives are.
So Logan, are you proposing that before they take anything off, that they bring it to the board? Is that what you just proposed?
I'm, yeah, I'm proposing that, uh, the board be notified and have input.
So, um, you want us to wait seven days for a special call meeting, late something inflammatory?
Yeah, see, I, you know, I have a different perspective. I, I appreciate what Logan's saying. I do have a different perspective. Um, I don't think we should have anything in your policy that we cannot enforce. And it needs to be enforceable by you all. Um, you know, I, as a board member, I don't want to be engaged in every conversation about something you may want to remove from your Facebook page. I just.
Well, I just want to remind
I agree with you, Kathy.
But at the end of the day, it's gonna come back to the board. Uh, I mean, if you look back at a situation we've just got through earlier this year. So if we're not aware or involved, then I think it's the issue.
Okay, so. Um, what is it? I just want to, uh, reiterate that, um, Ms. Manning has looked over this and found that the language was appropriate in the terms of policy. Um, if you then look over to what our, um, crisis media plan is or our social media crisis plan, it does say, and this is more from the board, uh, sorry, from the staff's experience, because we have staff at different levels throughout the organization handling the social media platforms. So this is what they know to do. Casey will get this information and, I mean, it's is it the policy that needs to stay?
Uh, if they, if, right now, if there is a problem, if there's any question, then we remove our post. We remove the whole post and that takes away the negative comments. Because we have the authority to remove our own post before law.
Where, where is that engineing?
That's in the crisis plan. That's in reaction. The policy is for us to tell people, you can't do that. This is our policy. Click your frame. The crisis management is how we manage it. And we don't delete someone's comments. We delete the entire post that they're attached to. Is what we do.
And that is within
And that we control our posts, so we are legally okay to delete our posts and anything that goes with it.
So are you saying that, that, that particular comment that someone made will never get out into public because you already, uh, removed the post that had the comment attached?
Because it'll be on the page, most likely, apparently. But what it does do, and so if you, in the crisis media plan, it says that if we come across something that's a level two and it is obscene, name-calling, offend, you know, in fact, if it meets those requirements, um, certain people in, uh, the admin team are notified. Uh, what is it? Print off and copy, um, these comments at the post to the director. And then if you want to drop down to number five, it says delete our post entirely. Um, what is, and I don't Casey has always brought the board in for input as well as notification. Whenever we have had a social media or PR, I'll say crisis.
Yeah, I just usually call the board and talk with the board chair about it because we're in a hurry uh, to make, to take the action.
Yeah, I guess all I'm saying is if something like this occurs and, and someone on the board, I mean, I think it's, it's very appropriate to, to contact the chair. But at least we are aware. And we can deal with that versus being unaware and have issues.
So would you like, um, a directive that comes from the board chair that just tells the rest of the board what the situation is and what we're doing? For information?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. And that Kathy can put it out, but it will come from the board chair.
Yes. That's, that's my opinion.
I don't have any problem with that either.
Me either. I'm fine.
Okay. I, I would also, on, on the side, I'd like to see a little, a little bit more backup on that particular line item. Uh, it doesn't have to be as part of the report, but I'd like to see a backup on what you're supposed to do.
Uh, on which part? The political part or the?
Yes, no, the political part.
So just so that I make sure that I get you the information you're looking for, you would like that more fully defined?
Not necessarily in the report, but just so that you all have copies of it.
So you want a procedural there too? What we consider are further like a, a definition, something that's not actually part of the policy formally, but is there as an explanation?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, Andy, I'm, I'm not understanding what you're asking for. Could you go over it again? What, what are you wanting?
I, I'm saying rather than, than, okay, we have the, we have this this number listed. Uh, I, I would like to know what they're supposed to do if they, if they pull it. Why? And, and what, what's the next step after pulling it?
Okay, so you want them to go into it like a, a little procedure of what they, of what, of what they would do, how, how they would step it off? Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I get it. Thank you.
Um.
No, thanks for asking.
Andy, would it be, um, it might fall into the realm of a level one on the levels of crisis? And the reason uh, for that is because of the negative, not expressions, but that those with different mindsets and perspectives might take it negatively. Um, so I mean, it, it kind of
Okay, I'm I, I, I'm, I'm getting confused here. We're not talking about changing the wording of the policy, uh, we is, but my understanding is that Andy wants us to provide, um, a procedure, you know, get, this kicks in at this point. This is how we handle it. You, you know.
Right.
But, 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 but not, not change the wording of the actual policy. So what I'm hearing and what I've seen in the past was when something comes up, the library director handles it and then will, if it's an issue, will contact the chair, chair of the board. And I think the next step would be, I think Logan would like to see people saying, the board saying, okay, I'll be getting a memo out to the rest of the board saying, this was the issue and this is the procedure we followed and how we handled it and our rationale. But it shouldn't be, we're not including that in the policy itself, right? Is that, you're not asking for that, are you?
No, that's exactly what I'm asking for, Susan. Thank you.
Can we look at the crisis plan?
All right.
Look at the crisis plan, okay? Everybody go there. Under a level one, the approved response to something that falls into that category is that there will be a reply made to the post. If anyone wishes to discuss any concerns regarding the library, please email our director, my name and my email. That's the response. We're not deleting anybody's post. We're asking them to contact the director. Okay? So whoever's monitoring the Facebook or social media at that point, that's the response that goes out. It goes on the social media platform as the response. Now, if we get to a level two where it's really nasty, then, um, no exchange happens. We copy the post. I'm informed about them. I determine, uh, after talking to the board chair, whether or not we are gonna just respond with our level one response and leave the post, or we are gonna delete our post entirely and take all the comments with it. Those are the only two responses that are okay. I'm not gonna go in and delete one person's comments.
You can't.
I can't legally. I can respond that the comment isn't appropriate. Please contact me if you have questions. Or I can take the library's post down and remove all of the public comments that go with it. Those are the only two actions.
Okay.
And then what do you do after that?
Nothing, nothing, nothing. Nothing.
Well, but I think, I, I think Logan's concern is if we're taking the whole post down, um, there may be fallout in the community and the board should be aware of it.
Well, we'll
Exactly.
And we can then do the email and submit the
Right.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so, so we've all been in, in, in line and in tune and in agreement. So there's no, someone talks to us about it and then it talks, talks to the staff about it. It may get two different answers.
I'm sorry. I had a hard time understanding, Logan.
I'm saying that, uh, as long as we're aware, we're all on the same page, so there's no confusion in terms of what we think versus what you guys think or what you did versus what we thought you did.
I, I think what, what we want to do is we want to have your back. And so we'd like to know.
So, so we, we decided, uh, Casey would tell you uh, as, as, as a point of, uh, point to the next step, and then, uh, you would make us all aware.
Absolutely, right.
I think that's, that's appropriate.
And I think, I, Casey, that's pretty much what you did the last time we had a situation.
I'm sorry, what? What?
I, we're, I think we're all on the same page. I, I, I'm almost sorry I brought it up. But I think it, I think it needs to be talked, talked through.
It does. I mean, because this is, this is gonna happen. There's no way around it. But, I mean, we need to be clear. We need to be clear and, and we make, make sure that we're responsive to what the board wants from us. So it's good.
Well, can we vote on this and then discuss this? Uh, and then bring it up again in, in full business next week, next, next month.
What we?
What we've talked about.
Okay, what are we voting on? Because I have a couple of editorial comments. Are we voting on the external policy? Are we, are we voting on the internal social media policy? Plus the social media crisis plan, all three?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then I, I do have a couple of comments then. Um,
Okay.
It's editorial in nature, but if you look at the internal social media policy, uh, item number three. If you look at that, I'm reading from the point where it says, avoid publicly discussing incidents that occur at work, including fellow employees, patrons, or other persons with whom you have contact at the library, and this is the issue, or through work, library, work. This, that doesn't make any sense. Do you all have the same copy that I have? That's what it says.
I do.
Okay, so what I'm suggesting simply is to delete that phrase, or through work, library, work. Delete that. So that what?
So we're saying.
You're saying, Susan, that contact at the library and library work are the same thing?
No, hold on a second.
Doesn't make any sense.
Whom you have contact at the library or through library work.
Okay.
I think the word work is just in there twice. If you remove it.
Yes.
Yeah, it should be fine.
Just take out all through library work.
Okay.
Take the work out in front of the library again.
Okay.
Okay, and then the, um, so I, I, we need to fix that. And then the other, um, comment is under social media crisis plan. Level two. I find the wording, um, confusing. Um, so name-calling, obscene, inflammatory comments or statements that what is occurring on the platform. I, I think, uh, in front, we should, it should be comments or statements that indicate insert, indicate what is occurring on the platform is impacting followers.
Which number is that?
Number level two on the social media crisis plan. If you read that statement, um, it just
It's number two, level two.
Yeah, number two, level two, right.
I think there's just an extra word, maybe what is it? If you take out what?
I think if you simply, you know, you can keep it, comments, statements that you can't say that is occurring, that what is occurring, I would just say that indicate what is occurring on the platform is impacting followers. I think after that, you need a, something like indicate. Otherwise, it's not making any sense.
Thank you.
Do we all have the same copy then? Are we all on the same?
Yeah, we're on the same page.
Okay. So those are the only two editorial comments I had.
If you're gonna do that, I, I have one.
Okay.
The fourth paragraph in the internal social media policy. Fourth paragraph, as will of all communications. I don't know what that means. Is it with, as with all?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just got lost. Did you see that?
Yeah, that's just
Paragraph. Of the
Should, should it be with?
Yeah, W I T H.
W I T H, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? On the media policies? Thank you for your input. And Kathy, you had made a proposal to accept it?
I so move, yep, I so move that we approve all three of the documents. It looks like Susan's seconding, she's got her.
My second.
Okay.
So we approved them as amended, though, right?
Oh, absolutely, as amended, thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, thanks, Susan, yes.
Yep, thank you, Susan.
No problem.
Is there anyone opposed? Put your hand up or holler or something. Okay, Stephanie. Are you opposed?
Stephanie's muted.
She's muted. Stephanie, unmute yourself.
I didn't mean to.
You're muted, okay, Stephanie.
Are you opposed?
Stephanie, you're good.
No, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, moving right along, sorry. And we talked about the Skyfire project, we want to talk about the Pavilion project?
Yes.
Yeah.
Casey, you want to talk about our meeting today, or do you want to just forget that till the next time?
Well, I think you could tell them about it more than I could.
Okay, we had a meeting with a contract individual today, went over the plans for the Pavilion and the budgeting. And I don't know what I did with it, but it came out to about $300,000, a little higher than I had originally projected, but still very, very doable. I think we're probably looking at about 325. It, they had a lot of great ideas and some major changes in it so that it could be used not only as a Pavilion, but as a, an area for meetings and brides and whatever else. So I was very pleased with it and you'll hear more about this as we go forward. But I think the amount of money we'll be looking for is probably in the 325 to 350 range, if we include chairs and tables and everything else that we're going to need.
Andy, does that include the restrooms?
Any questions on that?
It's a totally metal.
Yes, it includes everything. It includes, I'm sorry, go ahead. It includes the restrooms, it includes the storage facility. It includes doing the entire building with wifi and electricity, air conditioning, the restaurant, the restrooms and the storage facility, and making it possible for the storage facility to be converted into an area that, if we're using it for weddings, they could use it for changing or for getting together, or if we're using it for plays, the actors can use it for a changing area also and a staging area.
Andy, I have a question. Andy? Can you hear me, Andy?
I'm sorry.
I have a question. You know, we were talking about having the proposal that Merrillville City pays for the restroom. Is that part of this or is that totally outside of that proof route?
Merrillville said they didn't, they didn't go for that at all.
Okay.
Yeah, but I haven't given up on them yet.
Okay.
I think with the reports in the last couple of weeks, both in Merrillville and Alcoa, that their tax base has gone, has actually gone up rather than down. Tax, tax income.
Okay.
Sales tax income. They may have some extra money, and Alcoa didn't have any extra money for anything. With all the projects, they're going, but I think Merrillville should still be looking for some dollars for this.
Okay.
And I'm not gonna let them get away with not doing it.
So Andy, I have a, just, just for clarification purposes, the cost is increased, but my understanding is that the flexibility in the usage of this facility will be much, we'll be able to use it much more. It's gonna be much more flexible and much more marketable? No?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Totally.
Yeah, now, one caution, and, and I don't even know how big a caution this might be, but I do personally feel strongly that we should not be doing anything with the library's facilities that can appear that we are competing with other businesses in the area. And so suddenly hearing about the possibility of this being turned into a wedding venue makes me a little uncomfortable. And I just want to throw that out there.
Well, that was one of the, you're right, and that was one of the things that Boyd County brought up to me when I proposed this to them. They do not want it to be competing with several other venues.
Right, right.
That are in the county.
Especially now with small businesses really struggling, you know, they're all really struggling right now, too.
The, the library is already a wedding venue. There are weddings here two or three times a year, sometimes in the building, sometimes outside. Sometimes they rent rooms for receptions. We're already doing that. We wouldn't directly compete because we would not have the facility amenities that one of the nicer venues would have. We would be, for the bride who doesn't have a lot of money and doesn't have a lot of resources, our pricing would not be competitive with other.
I don't think we would be advertising it as such. I think we're advertising it as a venue for educational purposes. And then if there's, if there's some side, if we pick up some extra business because of it, that's great. But that's certainly not the first thing that we're gonna be going for, for, or that I would, I don't, I don't think that we're advertising it that way, or even wanting it to go that way. I just don't think there's any venue that is available to the general public that they can actually use in one county or Merrill. And certainly the schools can use it for nothing. And there is not, there is nowhere that they can use that. But anyway, I'll be, I'll be bringing up more information as we, as it goes along. But I will take what you said, Kathy, and certainly address, think about that. As I'm talking to people. I just really like the idea, I think it's a good idea.
Does anybody have any concern about our existing facilities and the maintenance that needs to be done? And where that money's coming from? And how the public's gonna feel if we're crying for money for that? And, but yet we're building a new structure that's gonna need its own future maintenance. And we've already had this big battle with the money from the city and, and now we is that in, this, they're not paying the increase in salaries going forward that the rest of the county people are gonna get, and we have more full-time salary and benefits. Like all those expenses are gonna come up in a year or so. Is anybody concerned about that, or how does that play into it?
I, I wanna, I just want to say one thing. Of course, we're gonna do whatever the board directs us to do. But the board has to understand that there's a level of responsibility here. The library has to raise revenues. We generate normally 225,000, huh? Oh, $230,000 of revenues towards our operating budget. We have lost that. We are waiting to see, you know, we'll have a pretty good indicator of what we're going to be raising. There is no money coming from our funding bodies to cover that, it is not gonna happen. So the library board is responsible for ensuring that we have the money to operate. So we either have to downsize, remove staff, change hours, readdress M O E to operate with the money that we're assured, or we have to find ways to generate revenues to cover the difference. That, I mean, those are the options. And I am open to whatever ideas that the board has and I'm open to implementing, coming up with plans for whatever direction you want me to look at, okay? Um, I, yes, Susan, I am worried about all of that, I worry about it all the time. Perception, but I'm trying to, you know, wind my way around this situation and come up with the best possible plan to keep the library going and to provide the services that are needed to happen. So that.
I, I, yeah, and I get that, but to Susan's point, some of this will be perception. And so we should arm ourselves, if we move forward with this, we should arm ourselves now with what are the messages? So for example, if you are seeing the Pavilion as a revenue generating facility, then we should be in a position to say honestly and straightforwardly that the rental rates cover the maintenance so that we are not simultaneously incurring more maintenance expense. You see what I'm saying? It's sort of like getting ourselves ready and armed with, you know, these kinds of question, response, you know, Q and A kinds of things. And, and we do need to consider what would be the rental rates. I mean, we, the library can't underwrite the care of this Pavilion when we're already struggling with these financial issues with what already exists, which is what I'm hearing Susan say.
Exactly. We're taking more and more burden. I don't see where a $300,000 facility is gonna generate 200,000 of revenue every year. I mean, I don't, the math, I don't know how often you rent, but it just doesn't seem like that's, I wouldn't spend 300,000 of my own money thinking I was gonna generate 200 on an open Pavilion, 200 each year.
And it may be.
I'm very financially conservative.
Yeah, but I mean, but you're raising good questions in my view. And, you know, and my, my, my own view is that I'm not, as of tonight, completely opposed to a Pavilion. But at a minimum, I would think we would want to be absolutely sure that our revenue rates are covering the maintenance of these facilities at, at a minimum. And if we can't do that, plus earn some additional capacity for revenue generation, then it does beg the question, why are we doing this?
Well, but first and foremost, we have to generate revenue for the existing, to maintain the existing facilities.
Right.
So by building another one, I don't want to.
Well, I hear, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think the problem is we, we can't get any existing revenue with what we have. Everything we have is inside. And until we can generate some additional income from outside.
But COVID will probably not be here forever. And if it is, well, then life's changed for everybody and it's all back to the drawing board.
That's true, but.
I mean, an outdoor Pavilion can only be used six months out of the year anyway.
Not really. Should be, it should be at least nine months out of the year.
Well, Andy, you said you're collecting some information. And, and so at some point, will our board receive a formal proposal around this? In terms of, of, you know, what, what it's designed to achieve, what it's going to cost, some forecasting of revenues and, you know, and in other words, of a fully comprehensive proposal. And the other thing is that we need to be careful that we incorporate our learnings from the learning lab. And, you know, if we move forward with this, I, I, I don't want to relive, you know, that we didn't bid something, or we didn't, you know, do this or do that, you know, because we got in a hurry to, you know, to move forward with building something. You know, so we, we agreed, we had a little retreat and we came up with a list of some lessons learned and I want to be sure that those are sort of before us as well.
Actually, you make a good point, because in reality, you probably can't get anything built for at least six or nine months, because I think they're all so busy and there's a shortage of supplies from everything being closed. So by then.
Really, the only things.
It'll be behind us. But I, next to that, I.
I mean, if somebody would, would give us, if somebody would give us $300,000, we could have it built this, this within three months, with no, with no problem.
And how can we do that without bidding? We'd have to bid it, wouldn't we?
No, because we're not, we're not doing.
I thought we were covered by the county's purchasing regs.
I'm sorry, I just lost. Close communication. The way I understand it. I'm sorry. The way I understand it, if, if it's done with private funds and it is, is built privately, does not have to go through the bidding process.
All right, so, so you're, you're thinking in terms of the foundation, you're talking about through the foundation.
Absol- absolutely.
Yeah, okay, I, I see what you're saying.
Any funds that we would raise would have to go to the foundation.
Okay, I, I see what you're saying.
But would it not be prudent to bid it out, to know that you're paying a fair price?
Well, we're only, we're only dealing with basically three areas. One is concrete, the proposal now is not for a wooden structure of any way. It's for, for a metal, metal structure.
Yeah, Andy, you're cutting out.
Yes.
And, you know, and.
We're not gonna resolve this.
Yeah, we're not gonna resolve this until we see a proposal. And so, yeah, yeah, I think that's a good point.
But next to that, I think we also need to kind of consider, what are the outstanding maintenance items? I know we looked at them six months ago or whenever, but what are the outstanding maintenance items and what do they cost? And what do, what is our plan to try to address some of those?
Are you talking about things like a new roof? I mean, is that, is that among the stuff you're talking about, Susan, or are you talking about something else?
Yes, the new roof, the air conditioning, or maybe that's all been replaced. I don't know where we stand with that, it's been a while since we've discussed it. And I know, seems like some work may have been done, but.
Okay. Well, I, I look forward to reviewing a formal proposal, you know, for the idea of this before anything, you know, goes beyond that. So that I, you know, so that I feel like I know what, you know, what's really. You know, what's really being proposed and thought of.
I understand.
Yeah.
The, the meeting that I had with the county, with the, uh, financial director and the mayor. Both assured me that, that the roof and the air conditioning are part of their, their plan to take care of. Now, you know, when that happens, I, I don't know, but I will, we'll be back on. Talking to them again. But tha- that's a, that's a necessity and that's a county responsibility. Okay, um, let's go, let's move on a little bit. Let's go ahead and do this. Alright, moving on to new business, uh, Casey, you wanna talk about the holiday schedule?
Every year we, um. Submit a schedule to the board for approval for holidays aligned with the county. But also taken into consideration our, our days, um, and the way the staff works here. Um, so this is the proposal for, um, next year and we're. This one takes out the, the extra day that we ended up having to add this past year. To cover the way the, the days fell for one of those weekends. So, and can we, we're twenty, twenty-two days, twenty-one days?
When I was looking through the schedule, I, I noticed the, the Christmas was different than the county Christmases.
Because we're open Saturday. Usually we're open Sunday. Well, the meeting rooms.
Yeah, I saw.
Meeting rooms are open on Sunday, so that means they wouldn't be available for, uh, a group to use. But only, only one staff member tends to work on Sunday.
They would, so. So you would be closed Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
Yes. The building would be closed.
Um, Casey, this, th- these holidays are paid holidays, correct?
Not for part-time people, only full-time.
Okay, now, and, and I know we have talked about this in the past, so forgive me for repeating it, but I wanna be sure I'm understanding this. Does every full-time employee get paid all twenty-one holidays? Even if they would not have had a work schedule that would have had them working that day anyway? Pardon me?
No, they get paid their forty hour, for forty hours a week regardless. This is when the building's closed to the public.
Okay, I'm trying to translate the number of holidays into your labor costs. And. So, are, is everybody getting paid their forty hours and that's it regardless of the, of the holiday schedule? Or is this an extra holiday pay kinda scenario?
No, they just continue to get paid their regular forty hours a week. Part-time people do not get paid for holiday hours.
Yes, but are they getting paid for twenty-one holidays a year? Is, I guess, is that part of your question?
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot.
Exactly. Private industry gets ten, ten, maybe twelve at best.
Yeah, and so.
So that's what you're.
Yeah, I'm trying to get my head around, you know, wha- what does that translate into in terms of, you know, if everybody's. If everybody was working their normal schedule and you didn't have any holidays as compared to. Um, what, what, what our labor costs would be with these holidays in the, in the mix.
Although, as I look at December twenty-fifth, that's a Friday, but. So they would be paid the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, Thursday and Friday, but the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh's a weekend. They're not paid for a weekend anyway, but it's closed. So would that take it down to nineteen days?
Can I make a comment that might help clear it up? Um, the full-time people are scheduled Monday through Friday. And the days that were closed Saturday and Sunday, there's like seven weekend closings. That's not included. If you don't, if you're not normally scheduled on the weekend, you're not gonna get that holiday. So the, most of the full-time staff is Monday through Friday. So the Saturday and Sunday closings that we have, nobody's getting that as holiday.
Okay, well, here again, you know, perception is everything. So I think we need to be careful how we're labeling this and how we're talking about it. So how, how have you labeled it? I don't have that document in front of me. I did look at it, but I don't have it in front of me. How, what, what's our, what's the headline for this?
Holiday schedule.
Holiday schedule.
Because it has to do with when the building is closed.
Okay, so I'm trying to think if we can just label it where it's abundantly clear. That we're not talking about employees getting holidays. We're talking about the facility being closed.
Days closed is the head, is the heading on that column.
What does it say Kathy?
Days closed.
Okay, alright, thank, thank you. Okay, thank you for re- reminding me of that. Okay, I'm cool.
County calls it closure schedule. The county's schedule calls it closure schedule.
Okay, got it.
And we can do that, just, no problem.
Thank you.
So, so to be redundant, if you look at the, uh, Black County Department, they have, uh, eleven days. Twelve days for holidays. I mean, I'm assuming that they're getting paid for those. These are all Mondays and Thursdays and Fridays, et cetera.
They have fifteen.
I'm sorry?
They have fifteen.
Did I miss something? Okay, so I'm assuming that we're following the same schedule.
Uh, the county offices are not open on Saturday and Sunday.
I understand that.
They're, uh, yeah. It is, this, I'm, I'm just gonna say, this is very difficult to wrap your head around. I, I have to do it every year, thinking about what it means.
So, so, so you, you know, from, from last year, how many, how many full-time, how, how many holidays? Did you give four times, uh, employees? Would pay?
This is the same ones the county got, right?
Be the same. Fourteen, if you just count.
Right.
Two days.
So, so that's what we're talking about, fourteen, uh, paid holidays.
They're the same as the county.
Right, yeah.
We close our building, it's a little bit more complicated.
Right, right, right.
I think Kathy Harmon, Hammond was absolutely, uh, correct in that if you look at it as a building closure schedule. Versus a paid holiday, it might bring more clarity to it. It's a closure schedule for the building.
Right.
That's the only way I can keep this straight because we've had this conversation in these board meetings before. I'm like, I like what Casey just said. Every year I have to get my head wrapped around this again, you know? And so I appreciate your patience with me in particular, and I do think this labeling thing is really critical.
I, I, I think the title of the, of the sheet has to say building clothing, clothing, rather than holiday schedule. Cause then I think you, you, you're exactly right Kathy. I think it, it looks like we're giving people, you know, twenty vacation days. Which is not the case.
Right, exactly.
And this is for two thousand and twenty-one. Do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes.
Yes, we do. Okay. Okay, we, I mean, we, these are county, these are county dictated, so we don't have much discussion on this, do we? Angela or Kathy, Casey, anybody?
I don't think.
County.
County dictated.
Yeah, the county holidays are mandated for the county. The library board can set the library holiday schedule any way they want.
Yeah, these closures that are in addition to formal county-recognized holidays are our closures.
Uh, and I'm not sure that the board has to follow the county. Holiday.
Yeah.
The holiday schedule is granted.
Well, a- as an example. Uh, Easter. There is a closure of Friday. I, I'm assuming that's Good Friday and, and we're closed. The county doesn't even list that.
They do. Yeah, they do. Good Friday. On the next page is the county's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, oh, I was looking for Easter. Okay, alright.
We have two extra days because they're not open on Saturday and Sunday and we are.
And actually.
Correct, uh, correct, I understand that.
And we're losing a day because the county's open on, the closed on the twenty-seventh of December, but we're gonna be open.
See, it just looks like a lot because we are open and off on Saturdays and then sometimes Sundays. It used to be Sundays. But what we're.
I'll tell you what, can we, can we hold this off until next time and take a look at it again?
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't wanna beat this to death, but, but, let's talk about it in November.
Okay, that sounds, how can I lay this out besides changing the name? That it will make it easier for you to understand. So you might have any ideas? Because I would love it if I could figure out a way that we don't have to go through this, um, confused.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Would it be?
Be helpful to put the county's schedule beside it just to compare. Um, doesn't matter to me, I'm just throwing that out there.
Right here, it's, it's on the page, it's on the page.
Yeah, you know, I'm wondering if this is a, you know, because ultimately this will become a public document. So I'm wondering if this is a place where we could have a one paragraph. Do I dare call it preamble? That sort of, um. Explains that, um. That in addition to the normal county employee holidays, see attached. The library. Has to address holidays. From a, you know, weekend perspective because we're open on the weekends. When, when that is not the case with most county employees and most county services. In other words, sort of. Maybe a, an, a preamble that sort of explains why. It looks like we have more holidays. I, I don't know. That may, that may be a terrible idea. I may even. You know, hate that idea later, but I'm just trying to brainstorm here.
Kathy, are you, are you concerned that, uh, people may see this and think that employees are getting these?
Yes, yes, yes.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking that there's a little, just something that just clarifies what this is in addition to changing the title. I don't know, that may be too much. Sometimes you can have too much to say about something.
Cause I didn't like that Kathy.
Okay, that's good. I, 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 I get it. I, I'm, I'm sort of not liking it myself right now.
Okay, let's, let's postpone, let's postpone this to the next meeting.
Okay.
Do that, but I, I, I would also any suggestion, put the building in, uh, put the building in there for the next, it may look different when we see it again next month.
The other thing is, is the county does not consider Saturday and Sunday. If we add the Saturday and Sunday, which the county is closed anyway. And you put them where you're talking oranges to oranges because if the county, you know. Cause the county is getting the same amount of days as the library is. It just looks different. And the ca, the library has to call it out because the Saturday and Sunday are our operation days. So if the, the county is closed mon, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And then we show it right next to the library being closed Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Would that?
You, you know, I don't, I don't know. I think, you know, in some ways we're almost getting too complicated and, and, and I think we need to be careful about. You know, take law enforcement, for example. They work twenty-four, seven. They never stop. You know, all your public services people, your fire, you know, people like that. So, and so we, you know, we need to be careful about how much we make of this, you know, county employees don't work Saturday and Sundays. That's really not a completely true statement.
Again, we're not talking about employees, we're talking about the building.
Right, right.
Well, okay, but your public safety buildings are open on the weekends.
Not to the public.
No, not to the public, that's right, but they are open to, yeah, but they're not, but they are to their employees.
And that's what we, we need to say as a headline for this or, or the title of this. Is when it, when the building is closed, not the holiday schedule necessarily.
I think December twenty-fifth is a Friday. I think the calendar. Oh, that's twenty-one. Okay.
This is twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah, sorry.
Next year.
I, I would suggest we put the building, uh, how, uh, build in holiday schedule and then relook at it in November.
Right, I agree. Okay, let's do that. Let's move on. Thank, thanks for your input on that. I, I really appreciate that. Alright, we have a couple more things. Friends funding. Uh, Bruce, are you, if you're still with us. Can you talk about that?
That's, that's where the library board asks for funding. We have no funding requests, so technically we're done.
Okay.
Okay, uh, and, and no funding requests. What about funding requests for the foundation?
No.
I know we had. I think Angela already talked about that.
That was the last ones. Yeah, but we don't, we don't have any new ones for the board to consider this month.
And, okay, okay. Is there any other information or anything else that we need to bring before the board? Okay, do I hear a, a motion to close the meeting?
I move.
For a second.
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you. Is anybody opposed to closing the meeting? Okay.
Bye, everybody.
And have a great weekend, everyone.
Thanks, Andy.
Logan, good to see you again. Take care.
Thank you. Nice man back.
And Bruce, I'm glad you're doing well. Take care.